Just the thing I'm sure it hurts my back.
Calling the regular council meeting on Monday, October 14th, 2022 to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To get approval of the agenda, there is one change under Citizens Business Verbal Number Three. Besides general election ballot, Mr. Boss would like to add rest board.
I move that we approve the minutes with amendment.
Second.
Agenda.
Oh, excuse me, the agenda, sorry. I move that we approve the agenda with amendments.
In the second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting and executive session on Monday, October 3rd at 2022 and minutes of the special meeting of October 5th, 2022.
I move that we approve the minutes.
Good man.
My second. We have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Nominations for recognition, I do have one. I would like to recognize Thomas Hurley for buying Donna's Diner and keeping it going. Mayor, I also have one, I'd like to recognize Archie and Sharon Calendar for cleaning up the senior center of flower. Certificates of recognition, none. Citizens Business and Writing, Tommy Christensen catering permit. The Captain Bottle has been chosen to cater for the Halloween Music Festival at the Weston County Senior Center. This event will be held at the Senior Center at 627 Pine Street in Newcastle, Wyoming on the date of October 22nd. We would like to request the catering permit to this event beginning at 9:00 a.m. on the 22nd of October and ending at 9:00 a.m. on the 23rd of October. We thank you for your consideration, sincerely, Tommy Christensen.
Your Honor, I have some supporting information for that application that I'd like to give it to you. For, okay, this is what the Arts Council was doing on the 22nd. And it's, it's, it's what? That she's applying, we're going to have a little beer garden.
Yes.
What we're calling our Halloween Music Festival. We have three bands coming, a country rock band and, oh, I'm running short, Tom, I'll get you one later.
That's okay.
Thanks. But anyway, we have country rock and Golden Oldies, they're going to play first because some people like to go home early like me. And then a rock band, so she'll be the beer garden there at that event.
Okay, so she's requesting a 24-hour catering permit that under, by virtue of the provisions of Section 12-4-502 Subsection B of the State of Wyoming Alcohol Beverage Control Law, the City of Newcastle, County of Weston, State of Wyoming, in consideration of the sum $20 paid by Tommy Christensen, who would like to do business as Captain of Bottle, City of Newcastle, County of Weston hereby license permit and authorizes for said Tommy Christensen doing business as Captain of Bottle to sell malt beverages upon the premises of Weston County Senior Center, 627 Pine Street.
Mayor, the motion that we approve the 24-hour catering permit, Captain Bottle, starting 9:00 a.m. on 22nd of October, go to 9:00 a.m. on 23rd of October.
Mr. President.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. 24-hour catering permit approved for Tommy Christensen. Citizens Business Verbal, Scott Dominique. Under Verbal Number Two, Amanda Dixon parking on South Summit.
I'm Amanda Dixon and I own Little Ones Childcare and we're located at 330 South Summit. I am just here because we have, our new neighbors are parking in front of our parking lot, in front of our facility. And they have very large vehicles, so it's making it hard for staff, parents, families to pull out of the parking lot and see oncoming traffic. I'm just trying to look out for the safety of the kids, families, my staff and the community, so I'm just here to see if there's any ideas or suggestions for me to fix the issue.
Have you talked with them?
So, we've had a problem with them parking in our parking lot before and we've asked them not to do it and they still do it. So I haven't talked to them about this issue just because it didn't work the last time.
Didn't you, didn't you call an officer about that?
Yeah, we've called four times, I believe, to ask them to ask them to move out of the parking lot.
But didn't, didn't the officer say that it was public parking?
Um, yeah, one officer said he'd have to look into it because he thought that that was a public parking area.
And it's not?
No, I own it, yeah, I own that.
And they're not parking in it anymore, right?
Not that, no, not for five days, no.
But they're parking on the street so that parents can't drop off their kids.
Right, so there's two like really large vans and then a minivan and then a smaller car. So like when they're going to pull out of the parking lot, they can't see either way to pull out.
I would say definitely first foremost, we've talked to them about that situation.
I don't know, the county church, they put up no parking signs.
That was in front of a business.
Yeah, but it's in front of a business.
You just have to talk. I would try talking with them instead of...
Well, has she already done that?
About this situation, just the parking lot.
I guess that's a place to start and then if they don't cooperate, then we can look into it a little bit further.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Do you have a really big brother, Johnny?
No, not really, he's old, but he's not very big.
Citizens Business Verbal Number Three, Mr. Boss, general election ballot and majority.
Okay, the thing that we all have made aware of at the city council meeting the other night, not city council meeting, but the candidates event forum, is that we have the three positions that need to be filled and there's four names up there. And then we have one at the bottom down here for a two-year. And I talked with Councilwoman Anne McCauley and she has something else to say on this. And Anne, what did you find out from the secretary of state?
Well, Carrie Joyce called the Secretary of State today and she called me back and she said that it is what we thought it was going to be. So you can vote for ever of the five that are running.
There's no analogy with the person that frankly will be.
So you can vote for all, any of the three on that and then you can bring one of those older and vote for the two, on the two year.
My question here tonight is that if, okay, let's say they have one, two, three, four up above and those four candidates, the least candidate up there gets more votes than the write-in and that people just don't write in name. And will the council then see that the voters are represented by who they chose? So if somebody gets two write-ins and that's all it gets and then somebody up here gets 150 to 200, 300 votes, they don't get on the council with this guy, they got two write-ins, is going to get a seat for two years? Well, that's genius, yeah, we like that. Okay.
I think I've been there, Tom.
Into genius?
No, what you're talking about.
Oh, yeah, yeah, me too, I've been there too, I was next in line, anyway. So, think about that, I think that the voters need a voice here and they told, they told the world who they'd like to have on their city council and if that person that gets a write-in for two years doesn't get as many votes as the one up above, please think about that, you don't have to accept that, do you?
No, it's on the ballot that way, there's nothing we can do to change what's on that. If they get put in that write-in, we can't overwrite what's, let's, let's say you got the 327 and someone got 400 over you and you didn't get in that upper piece, but you didn't get the write-in.
Well, you saw, you heard my example.
Yeah.
And Anne brought up another example, what if she wins both seats? What if somebody writes Anne in, because she's very popular and they could. And she can't have two seats or I was hoping she could.
Carrie did bring that up to me as an example, she said that, of course can't have her.
I was hoping when they looked at the state statute that he couldn't vote for ones that were in the primary for the open seats, couldn't put them in write-in, was hoping that that was the way it was written.
I would hope that as a city council leader, I'm sorry.
Aren't these statutes written in a state code?
Well, she called the Secretary of State.
They're, but they are the state code, they're not city code, right?
I mean, she called the Secretary of State, that's election, so that's totally out of our...
That makes it where they are, they can't do a thing as far as I can see.
We, we, we as a council could let our representatives know that we were concerned about this issue and the voters should have a voice here.
What I was told as well from Mr. Carrie Joyce is that if the person wins the four-year and the two-year, they can choose which seat they want.
Right.
So they could take the four-year or they could take the two-year.
And then your honor would appoint the two-year as, as...
I would appoint, or the council would appoint the empty chair.
Well, I guess that's cool, but I really think we need to contact our, our representatives about this issue.
It all started with like a miscommunication or a mistake, right? And now we're just trying to do the best we can with what we got. I don't know who came up with the write-in thing because I had concerns myself about that. I mean, we might have Mickey Brooks sitting on the city council and Donald Duck or whoever.
Vote for the cat.
Yeah, so I, I see an issue there, but we'll just have to see how it shakes out.
On the other point that I was on the city agenda, it's about the Newcastle Recreation. I have nothing to say about that personally at this time because I understand we're going to go into the executive session about it, is that true? Okay, I do have, this is a set of the bylaw of Newcastle Recreation. And we'll make sure we've got a written copy tonight, okay?
What if you're one short again?
Anyway, this is just a copy, make sure everybody's got it. I have taken the liberty to mark what I personally as a member of this, of the Recreation Board, believe is, is the issue tonight. That's all I have to say.
Okay, Mayor, council member reports, we want Heritage Park project on with tall grass.
Ma'am, I, would you, is it already, it took me a couple of minutes to set up, I got a screen and...
We can, we can go on to number two, Larry.
Okay, that's, I don't want to interrupt your, your, it's going to talk, but...
It's normal, we are. So number two is that Community Gas, that designation from the last meeting, we tabled it to this meeting, it's about the, I'll just leave it at it. Every year, the community gas makes the distribution of earnings to member communities. This year, our Board of Directors would like you to designate the project to your city or community that's being used for before we issue a check. This will give the Wyoming Community Gas more direct exposure to the citizens in each community. So we have an amount of $5,332.30 that we could do one long sum to something or break it up to different entities, I know what you mean. Anne wants it to go to the...
No, I want, well, no, I wanted to go to Christmas decorations.
Oh, that's right.
Not all of it.
Most of it.
Most of it.
What about between that and then splitting it up between the speed limit time that we were needing to do?
Flashing lights? So, are we doing half type Christmas lights or how much for Christmas decorations?
$3,000?
And what do we have? I don't know what you figure, do you know the prices though?
Their Christmas decorations are really very expensive, so just kind of depends on what you, what you're looking at. We can talk about it at a later date. I would figure three to three or four thousand for that speed limit signs, probably a big sum, but that would be in the study. And I believe that's going to be around 12, 15 hundred dollars. But a full study, figure those speed limit signs, with that say 15 hundred dollars rest of the Christmas decorations.
Make a motion. I have a question at that point, if you have 15 hundred dollars or whatever great interest for Christmas decorations.
I see.
Here we go, motion, on the committee's vote, on the committee's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
I think I figured out your devices here.
Looks like you're all on the screen.
Just need the lights, yeah, you're on the screen.
Okay.
Do you need to turn on? Turn that light off, yeah, turn it off.
Back, back here.
Whether that will help, yeah, is there...
It's not very bright. That's better.
That's better? Okay. I have a few minutes with you guys tonight to talk about Heritage Park and I don't know if everybody's gotten full update on it or whatnot, but we are very close to the completion of the feasibility study for Heritage Park and so, my name is Matt Fredel from Tall Grass. I'm leading the consultant team that's working on this project along with people in my office, Laumerta from State Line Architects and Casper and University of Wyoming Center for Business and Economic Analysis, David Edland. It's the primary group that's been working on this and so we have been working since the spring pretty much, I guess, it's the summer went by quickly and we're here at the end with a concept for the park and a full study that tells you a little bit about it. So I took the batteries out of one thing to do the other and it looks like it's just a little out of focus, so... The, um, let's see. I guess the important thing on this is just the why and you know, this project came from citizens in your community who took a grant that got us to you to prepare this study and there's a couple of needs identified. One is that there's a group that really wants the Veterans Memorial in town. They want it to be a Newcastle Veterans Memorial. And then with this concept for park out on this parcel of land, that Pinnacle Bank is interested in donating to the city as a part for that Veterans Memorial, what could it be, what would it be like if, if something was built out there? And then what are the next steps for the community in investing in this? So that's what I was brought on to do and we've developed this table, this study then, based on the questions that were in the RFP to address economic impact of the park, the needs of the community and find out what those are. We report on the stakeholder input that we had, so we, you know, interviewed people in town and we're at some markets this summer and festivals and whatnot and we had a survey online for people to participate in and then just generally had our ears open, listening to what was going on over here. Identified implementation opportunities with the group and still working on those. What are the right grants, what's the right funding mix or something like this? Part of it was just developing a concept for the park, so we've done that. Then analyze the costs of that, what in that is necessary expenditure? What is additional, just part of the concept? And what could you value engineer within that mix? And then to really know about what the maintenance of that part would be like, right? So that's all been investigated and it's in this report that I see you guys have on your desk right now. And I have a few extra copies, I guess, maybe I could hand these out to people who are interested in those, of just the executive summary. So if you're interested in that, here, why don't I just, I'll take it, here, you guys can take one if you're interested, pass it down. That's just the executive summary. So the parcel we're talking about is just about an acre and it's right behind Pinnacle Bank. And the idea for the park is that it could be a fun gathering place for the community. There's needs, you know, place for markets and whatnot, but really it could be this fun place where you do gatherings, concerts type you're talking about and also with the Veterans Memorial, a place where there could also be a solemn moment for people, so... The final concept I presented here before, but there's some several different aspects to it. One is the Veterans Memorial, that's really specifically designed to be reflective of the desires of the Veterans Memorial Committee in Newcastle and the concept that we've hit on upon with them is that within the site, there's kind of this embracing portion of the site that encloses a space where there's room for memorial walls, places for them to place brass plaques for people that want to be commemorated in one way or another. There's room for them to place words on the walls that have significance to that group and there's, it's also a comfortable place to be. So there's some benches and some shade, a lot of memorials are pretty hot, dry spaces. So the idea here was that it would be a place that you'd be welcome to come in, maybe even sit down and spend a few moments. And then within the rest of the park, really the center of it is a great lawn. We imagine that being an artificial turf so it could last all year long and have a low water. In fact, there's a stage that could be a focal point for ceremonies related to the Veterans Memorial and it could be a place where you could host a small concert. It's not set up to be like a fairgrounds type, you know, Brooks and Dunn are coming to town or something like that. That's not the intent of it, it's meant to be more like maybe the Cambria String Band or some of these other ones might come in and do that. You have a hundred to 200 people could fit into this park on a really busy night, but be perfectly set for something going on while there's a market there. So that's there, there's two shelters. One is just a shelter that's between the memorial and the kind of activity of the park, so it's kind of a quiet space in between and allows for, during ceremonies, might allow for somebody to rest, watch what happens on the stage and then just turn around and watch what happens at the memorial. So it could be a place for people that have a hard time getting around a little bit, just be a safe place for them. The park is built around providing a good place for markets. So there's lawn areas that are stretched out with built-in tie-downs and spacing for market tents to be set up. The second big shelter would have a concession room in it, restrooms, a little bit of storage. So that in turn becomes a neat, neat opportunity for just a little bit more in the park. A splash pad component was included in this as a draw for people that are in town and might be visiting. And then lots of shade and sitting around the edge of the park, has a fence around the south side next to the bank. And then there's a few more details that are embedded in the detail of the park, so... Just want to think a little bit about the different ways this acts. So it's acts as a Veterans Memorial, so it is a destination for those people to focus their energy. Because of its location, because of the amenity mix in it, it immediately becomes really attractive, people driving by on the highway. So it acts almost like a visitor's center and reinforces what's going on at the chamber. Splash pads are attractive stop for people driving by. Families will stop and this is a great place to introduce people to what's going on in Newcastle. So we really see it acting as an arm of the chamber and the city itself just introducing people to what a neat town you have. It's a market venue, so it's specifically set up for serving different sizes of small markets. It's a small outdoor event center, so it could be a place for your Arts Councils to plan regular events or other organizations. It's a splash pad, you know, one of the things that we hear is that you guys need a pool, why don't we do it here and there's just not enough room on this site for a pool. And a pool isn't monumental undertaking, you know, just to like add a scale of ten to your whole endeavor, right? And but a splash pad is a really easy way for a community to provide a small amount of water attraction for people. And of course, there's concern about that with the Veterans Memorial, but the design that we've set up has really been embraced by the Veterans Committee and they love the adjacency to it. The way that it can be shut down when they need to use it. The way that it can be shut down when they need to use it for the ride of it, right? So it becomes a community destination, another park for you, a neighborhood park. Could be a place for food trucks to focus their energies. And then it has its own park on the side of town there. It needs to be pretty self-sufficient in just regards to being able to be cleaned easily and whatnot. So that's some of the ways that it'll function within the community. And the economic impact study, they, those guys down at the University of Wyoming do some pretty interesting work based on the estimated cost of the site and then information they gleaned from the survey that happened and other formulas, formulas that they use. So they see that this, the construction of this park will create approximately three and a half million dollars of value added to the local economy. They'll, the park will add approximately 200,000 each year in value added due to visitor spending in the Newcastle economy. And you can read that section of the report to see exactly how they derive that information on all of this, actually. Maintenance and operations will generate approximately $30,000 in value added each year to the local economy. And then approximately 76,000 in new state tax revenue will be generated in the first year to, due to Heritage Park from the construction, visitors, and maintenance operations. So these are things that, you know, the way they do these numbers, you spend a dollar and that dollar just doesn't end there in the community, right? It gets found again. And then they have formula that they use to generate these numbers. It's pretty interesting that you create more value added to the economy than the park itself will cost to build. One interesting thing is just the jobs created. You know, we estimate the maintenance of the park to require about a half FTE. So about a half a person would be required to maintain that throughout the year. So that's pretty significant. But there's also concessions. So that concession stand could be a place that has a high schooler or somebody doing a summer job there. You know, for a few hours in the afternoon, I could see selling some sodas and ice cream. If you chose to leverage this as a winter ice rink location and we've thought to design the lawn so that it could host whether or not it's real ice or artificial ice, then you have a winter use there, at least through Christmas. Kind of peters out after the, in January, I think, when it's, everybody starts hunkering down, right, the whole winter. So concessions offers the potential for a couple of jobs in town. Events, this offers a place for you to support those organizations, their employees, volunteers, and their efforts through a shared facility that's in the event center. Weekly markets impact dozens of vendors and of course their livelihoods. And then you know, these types of parks act as a little bit more than a neighborhood. They kind of become this community event destination where you just go. It starts to strengthen the underlying continuity of the community and the way that your businesses support each other. Eighty-five percent of the surveyed residents were either favorable or very favorable of the park and the survey they have. It seems pretty positive. I mean, it's hard to be against the park, but there were concerns. So who will pay for it? Who will care for it? Why not put it somewhere else? We have other priorities in the new park. These are all about concerns that you have to weigh when you look at something like this. Some people were just like, where is this going? Yeah. And not understanding exactly where it was meant to be. And then people are also just expressed a lot of excitement in their comments for this park. In particular, they loved the idea to have a park for the kids over on this side of town. They liked the idea of a splash pad. And you hear from families regarding that quite a bit. And then there is the question, is water the right use? Using water on a splash pad, is that environmentally correct these days with the drought? But all in all, people really love to see that you'd be doing something positive for the community with this park. So regarding who will pay for it, that is still up in there. It's a task that the committee has taken on and they're still looking at what are the right grants to do related to this. And of course, you know, if the city had investment in it as well, that's undetermined yet. So. So do we need another part? Part of this was just doing a sheer needs analysis, looking at your community related to national standards. So one of those is just the radius map that shows the draw, right? Different types of parks have a different type of draw typically in a community. And all this you have to take with a grain of salt when you're talking about a rural community, right? It's just not the same out here on the plains. So a community park, of course, serves the whole community. But it is kind of interesting. It tells you where your parks are and are. And you can see that the far east into town as you get closer to school, it is just a little bit further from the park. I think the service in the rest of the community is pretty darn good. Of course, this location's right at the intersection of your two busiest roads. So that is definitely a draw for the visitor's center aspect. And then comparing different park types, there's really four types, pocket parks, neighborhood parks, community parks, and linear parks. And those all have a rating nationally. And you guys are just a little shy on some of the numbers. And again, I have to say, you gotta take that with a grain of salt here because you also host a couple hundred acres of trails just outside of town that the city takes care of. And those are amazing asset. And they don't translate to numbers like this. But if you just have to say, do we have enough parks? You look at the numbers, you know, you could use more mini parks, neighborhood parks. And believe it or not, despite you guys having such great trails, you have a lot of them. Use even a little bit more of that just related to the national standard. Compared to other towns, though, you have a few fewer acres per thousand people than most towns, or a lot of towns in the region. In particular, we just compared to Lost, Upton, Sturgis, and Custer and just looking at that. And so all in all, within the town itself, your number of acres per thousand people are a little bit low. Now you add those thousand acres north of town and it just changes that totally, right? So again, in a rural town, you have to take that with a grain of salt. Looked at the traffic numbers of those roads and, you know, there's a, you know, around 1,400 more cars going by in the summer than there are in the winter. So if you think of the winter as baseline, who's driving back and forth around here? You know, that's a thousand fifteen hundred people driving by. If you could get 10% of those to stop at your park and because you do see people stopping specifically for a park in the summertime to get out of the car, that could have a big impact. Here's those trails north of town. I just think that's a fantastic amenity. I do think rural community needs to set its own goals. Those are national standards. You do with them what you will. But there are a couple of things that might lend to that. One is the, in general, in our research, we've just found that you guys are lacking a little bit in the planning document section of the community. So the long-term planning and whatnot, a lot of those just aren't in place. Communication between different entities is challenged. And I see that in every town I work in. I work in just about everyone in the region. Just the different organizations, communities have a hard time communicating because everybody's got their heads down and they're working really hard, right? So and I relate to that as being my housing commission and arts council too, in Custer. It's hard to know what everybody else is doing. But you can see, you know, in our analysis, we looked at each of the other parks. And in general, there's improvements that are needed at each of those. But again, it's hard to staff in our little towns. It's hard to find the people who can take care of these things that we make. So that all has to be part of the mix. So the vision, then something to decide, like, do we buy into this or not, right? And it could be a really fun place to be, but it is an investment to make. So that's what the feasibility study talks to you about. There's a little bit more information in there. There's some information we'd like to include that's about understanding parks and trends that are going on, what other places are doing and what they look like. And it just gives you some information about that. There's information about the grants that are available that are, that's in this document. There's a bit on the concept itself that's in the study, just so you understand what it is. And it can be carried forward, carrying that vision, whoever does it. There's that analysis of the cost. And then there's really in-depth information about how to operate a park. And this is a resource for you to use. And it's, we've developed it over years. And here's a little bit about it. One is a park like any city facility has a life cycle, right? And it's always within some aspect of that. So maybe at the beginning, you decide, hey, we're going to invest in a park. And then it goes into a planning phase, goes into a design phase, goes into this build phase, and then finally ends up where it spends most of its life being operated, right? And if you have the right tools, what you do is you run that. And every year, you do a little bit of analysis, like what's going on with this facility? Is it needing improvement? What is it, what needs to happen this year? And every, you know, starting in five, 10 years, you see we have these life cycle replacement things that need to happen, right? So maybe that park loops out, say a park, right? Dow Park or something loops out to a life cycle. So we need to replace the restrooms like you're doing right now. Okay, so that's a life cycle thing. And then maybe your park gets to the point where you're like, this is just really not working. We need to add some park into that park. That's a little bit bigger project. And so you loop out to where you need to do maybe another design phase. And eventually a park or any facility might end up at a point where you're like, man, we really need to rethink this thing. We need to go back to look at what the program is from the base and get a new master plan, right? And so understanding that park lifecycle helps you in understanding where all your parks are in that lifecycle really helps you understand what you've got as an asset as a community. So that's a tool for you to use that's included in there. And then we have a pretty extensive maintenance checklist that we developed for these things so that you with this park, you can use it for that one, for operating that park if it was built. Here's an example of just some of the precedents. It's so hard to see, I guess. But this is Crazy Woman Square up in Uplo. So it gives you the rundown of what they've got up there. Just a few pages from the document. We've even, on the maintenance section, gone through the specific elements of this park that, because it is a little bit unique, you know, there the Veterans Memorial has these pillars of light element that shoot beams of light up into the sky maybe and are kind of neat aspects that really add to the character of it and help landmark the site on the corner there. So we have a little bit about what the maintenance of that might be like if it was built. So and we've done that for all the elements that are in there. And the appendixes at the end of the document capture the presentations that we've done during this process, the full maintenance documents for you, and then the public input and meeting minutes from the year. And so that's really where we're at now, where I find that with these kind of documents, every time I open it, I open it to the page with the misspelling on it. I don't know how long that'll go on. I hope not too much longer, but we're at the point where we're just about ready to turn it over to the committee to take and run through their draft program. And some of those people are here now. We, we have a pretty good energy in that group. And of course, me and my team are here as a resource for you guys. We have to carry this forward as long as you need us. But I'd like to say thanks for one. This has been really interesting to get to know your community pretty well through its parts and the process that we've been through. And the concept for this park is really exciting. We see it really fitting well with the kind of regional goals that we heard about for Newcastle capturing the interest of people driving by, but also then serving the community in a really great way by creating a great destination where you can hang out with your kids or go to an event on a Wednesday night, maybe a movie or something down at the park in the summer. And maybe sit on Sam's lap in the winter, you know, it's kind of the kind of place that that kind of thing would happen and really be versatile for the community. So it's been fun. Thank you. Any questions just about what we've got? Anything to add, Dave, or?
Oh, I think you did fine. The one thing that I would add on the, the traffic patterns, that was per month. And so an increase on the summer months was 1,500 more per month over the winter hours, not for the whole summer.
Do you have a ballpark figure of where it is going to come?
Yep, about 3.2 million is the current estimate. So it is a significant chunk. Yep. Missed that in the presentation, but yeah.
How much do you like to donate, Tom?
I've got change right here.
You know, it's a significant investment for a community to make. No better place to invest your money than in your own community, though. And with the amenity mix that it has, it's filling a few needs that the community has, just things that are not there right now. In it, one of the things about it that we're really careful to do is to not replace the other great places that you have. You know, the fairgrounds serve their purpose. The Dow Park is just this incredible pool park right in the middle of town. And the other neighborhood parks are great. You know, this is not meant to replace those. It's meant to complement them. So.
I've been staying on the steering committee for a few months anyway. And I'm pretty excited about this park. And the funding climate in the state is such that there's a good possibility that we could get a solid grant that would pay for a majority, if not all. So, I mean, everybody keep your fingers crossed. But I think it'd be a wonderful asset to our community. And it'd be a really awesome welcome to our town. And then the idea was to put kiosks in the park, so it would kind of steer some of that traffic downtown and maybe give people an idea of what else Newcastle has to offer. So I, I think it's a great project. And the fact that Pinnacle Bank is willing to donate the land is another big plus. So yeah, I've been pretty excited to be on the steering committee.
Me too. I love it. I've been on the committee also and I just think if we don't do things like this, it's our opportunity to take advantage of maybe some of this money, maybe not, we're not going to get it all paid for. But we do need to take advantage and step up and commit to our town. And it's beautiful. The concept is beautiful. So that's my take. Go ahead.
Walter Sprague Newsletter Journal. And before I ask the question of the council that I'm going to ask, I want to make it clear, I'm actually very much in support of this as well. I just think it would be a great thing. My concern is with the current climate that we have, I hope we come out of this. But we have a lot of people all over this country and Newcastle is no stranger to this. And people who would rather sit at home and let the government pay them to sit at home than to go to work. And he already mentioned that this is a project that once, you know, you get it built, you got to have people that are going to maintain it. You got to have staff that are going to help run certain things. And my concern would be there, because if you don't have that in place, then the maintenance goes to hell. goes to hell and everything just starts to wear down. That's my only concern about it.
I would like to address this concern on that being part of the veteran community here.
Can you state your name?
My name is Daphne Sandoval, fellow veteran of the community. Now, I am actually with our post degree, Legion, National Legion, and I can say for certain that I will be there with this progress if anybody desecrates Dow Memorial.
And I'm sure most of the Legion or even the VFW would be there.
If you will support Dow Memorial, very nice.
Any other questions? There's a question.
Yes, what was the?
Your name?
Hello, I'm Jack Lawrence. I had a question, what would be the ballpark for the yearly maintenance costs?
Oh, thirty thousand, one. That was the value added to the community because of the annual maintenance. And I think the estimated expense, I guess, is half of a person's work for the city. So, one half FTE.
Full-time employee.
Yeah, about one and a half an employee. So, now that said, you know, there's these maintenance tools, some paperwork that's included in this. I think of that as a way to streamline your operations. And I think, too, this, this is built with the best tech we have for these kind of parks now, you know, but everything new is more. But this is also something that, the kind of benefit that it has, it's going to have your committees, the veterans group, for example, is highly committed to this. But I think your other groups will find that they're interested in keeping it up, too. And, you know, your community has some great things that it's done in the past. The mural program is great. Try to incorporate that into this park where we could, you know, this splash pad has a daily thing during the summer. Sometimes those things break. You know, there's always this expense that comes along with that, but it's, other communities that have invested have found that they were initially skeptical and true believers after,
Would things like the splash pad, Walter Sprague again, come under the maintenance of things like the engineers, city engineer?
Yeah, the park, the, the group maintaining the parks will do that work. And these types of splash pads are designed to be as simple as possible for operations. They are pretty smooth. They're almost like an irrigation system in some ways, you know, they turn valve on and turn valve off, so.
But if they break down, is the city engineers that would have to take care of this?
Who else?
Just me?
We are a public work group.
Okay, all right.
Thanks again. This has been all fun for us, and we've spent a lot more time than we thought we would on it. It's really great to be here with you guys and to explore this park and on this journey and learn so much about the community. I love Newcastle. The towns are really cool. I think you guys should tell people about it, but not that you want them to move here, but it's a really cool town, so.
Come visit, Dingle.
Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Matt.
I'm going to pack it up. Is that okay? Okay.
Thanks, Matt.
Deputy Director of Department of Public Works, City Park Treasurer, Stacy Hurd. Our audit process, we originally began, we're working with Jordan Jones from Penel Thorstensen, and the whole being that they will present their summaries app at our second meeting in the annual, the annual sixteen. We'll come on up for next couple of minutes. And that's all I have. Any questions for?
Public Works Supervisor, Greg Stumpf.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. From the last council meeting, there was a discussion with Newcastle Ice Association. I did meet with them about their requests. Majority of it's not that big a deal. What I'm really concerned about is putting dirt on the current place it put the ice on it, too, right now. They're talking seven to ten inches of material. Not so much placing because it moved off in time from, you can use the little escape park in the spring. Apparently, I'm trying to work with the model, so we can't come up with a better one. Their other requests were moving some escape equipment to give them a little more room. I think we've worked everything out with that to where we can probably do that. They also wanted to do a semi-permanent shed with electricity during their operations. I think we can probably find a place to put it there with electricity to it, so. Any questions about the reports?
Get some written through, this one on the reports on projects. And we, I guess, we looked at what we got planned on this for the tires, saying we're reaching the max, we've reached the max limit for tires. Obviously, it's not going to make sense for us to haul this up to Minnesota, Utah. So, the other option would be just to stop taking the tire or, we have an issue, though, with the tires typically being able to float over the years, come back to the top.
That's why we're trying to recycle them, keep them out of the landfill as much as possible. I have not had a chance to follow up and call the companies back and see what it takes to get it. When I did check on this a couple of years ago, we would have to pay them about what we get paid to take the tires in. So, truck tire would be around ten dollars a piece, car tires would be about four dollars a piece to sell, and maybe a truck, you know, if we take that piece out. I do not have current prices on anything, I apologize. I've been a little busy with, I guess, it's on my hands, so.
I think there's a, a little bit of a misconception about the tires floating. Like, if, if you run over them with a compactor, if there's not enough cover on them, they'll pop up to the surface again. But if you cover them with garbage and then cover it, then they usually stay put. I don't think they just randomly float up and pop to the surface after they've been covered.
Still, a year, yeah, absolutely. If you get enough weight on them, they'll stay. And that was part of the thing we did when we had all cardboard, we could not recycle for the later tires down, put cardboard on top of it.
The other thing comes into that, too, you know, for extending the life of that landfill, which was supposed to have been darned on the closure dates. And now we're probably going to have to have the cost of taking another pit, waiting for the other landfill to open.
Exactly.
So, do we take up the room that's in the landfill with tires that we're supposed to be using for all the garbage? So, you know, to me, this part in here is just maybe stop taking the tires in the landfill because right now, we need the room in there to make sure we can make it until the landfill comes open.
That is a, that is a real cost, though. We do have places around here that bring these to us because nobody else is taking them.
I haven't even heard any updates, though, other than that he pushed it off for another two years.
And I haven't had a chance to look into it.
So, I mean.
I, even with the pit space we currently have, I'm, I'm nervous for nine, fifteen years. We're going to have to do something to reduce the portion.
It'd be nice to know where the Weston County Solid Waste District is at, so we can get a real good time estimate.
It kind of puts us into an unknown piece of what we have to do to keep operating. I think the other one I just kind of highlighted and noted is, we had on the other report was on the streets portion of it, on the, we've done with the dirt patcher, and you found one for twenty eight five.
Yes.
Looks like we're spending around nine a year renting the dirt patcher. You know, and that, that cost, I believe, is under the amount that we did out, and it's a huge spend. Also, looking at, you know, do we have that money in there, or do we have to look at something that we do with the garbage truck, like the lease purchase? This one is beneficial to us every year?
The other thing about the bear patcher, a new machine is ninety thousand dollars. This company actually buys and refurbishes them and then sell them as rebuilt use. They do have certifications on the engine fan, just things like that. From time to time, we do have some difficulties with our own units and having to work on, having to keep them going in certain ways. A couple of years ago, here they had some issues. Honestly, as much as we're using it, we could actually use a lot more. It's easier to get oil hauled in and have an issue holiday.
That's a, you know, a usable purchase that we use here quite often. And we're, we've rented that here by years.
And that's just for a few weeks. And so, if we had a hundred, we could really use it.
Having run the dirt patcher, I mean, the, it glues the street back together in a way that traditionally, when we throw, like, threw and rolled, that it wouldn't stick, you know. We had some pretty good success with it, and it seems like the citizens appreciate it because the, if they're done right, they don't fail. So, I, I mean, I think it's a positive, so.
Yeah, I, like I said, I really think this machine would be worthwhile doing on ourselves. The oil isn't that hard to get over a couple of days, couple, even a week, we probably have enough oil outside to, to notice. Spring time, when winter finally does break, there are some opportunities to a bear patch in between storms and so on and so forth, instead of building the truck and roll or doing something else. We could actually potentially run this thing earlier, earlier in the year and get more work done with it, more profitable patching.
We've already taped for that already. We're looking at the last three years that we've rented that to, to do what we're doing now. So, to me, that's kind of like a, a piece of equipment that's kind of no greater, that we don't, we don't get a return back just by renting it by, or no money for return.
I think the, the reason that we initially started renting it was because we wanted to see how well it worked. So, then, once we saw that it actually glued the streets back together pretty good, I mean, it, it would behoove us to put any rent and then just purchase the unit, in my opinion.
That's, that's all I had.
I got one, Greg. We had some total poliform samples come back in ready edition. Are, are we catching up on that?
Yeah. Most likely, operator, all the repeat samples came back, clear to say.
Even the one they took at my house?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and all the, all the samples came back with, with safety drinks, so I almost chalked, I have to chalk it up to operator, which I made mistakes on examining it, too, from that guy.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I like the reports.
I do, too. Stacy's kind of looking at the budget regarding the dirt. Department head police department with an officer expecting a child that any day here will be utilizing a reserve to officers, so there'll be a change in that schedule. Otherwise, the best that I have is executive session. Any questions on this?
You still have any year date stuff for monthly calls? You always give us those.
I don't have any today. There's a law. There's a law. All right, City Attorney Hughes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have anything to report.
Any standing committee reports? Any other business? I can get a motion to leave regular council meetings that enter into executive session reference sixteen thousand for the four oh five contracts and personnel.
So moved, second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, and further discussion. Fingers say aye.
Aye.
Always opposed, same sign. Okay, moving into executive session at eight oh five.